Good evening, let me welcome you all to the November 1st meeting of the Daily City Planning Commission Agenda, and I would invite everybody to stand and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tatum, could we have a roll call?
Sylvester?
Here.
Edelman?
Here.
Satori?
Here.
Talarico?
Here.
Crump?
Here. Are there... I would imagine that's an error. We certainly don't have the minutes to December 1st, 2016.
No.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of October 4th, 2016?
No.
Then they stand approved as read. A public hearing, major subdivision, sub 1012, 12396, use permit UPR 0116011898, and design review DR 0116011899. Corey, if you please.
Good evening, Commissioners, Commissioner Crump. My name is Corey Alvin. I'm going to present the project. That is infill development that proposes a five-story, thirty-four unit condominium building, including twenty-one hundred square feet of commercial. The site is located...
I'm sorry. The site is located at 493 Eastmore Avenue, at the corner of Sullivan and Eastmore Avenues, the northwest corner. The site is within the Sullivan corridor, specific plan. It is zoned service, service commercial. It is part of the plan that is considered mixed use. The site itself was retained as service commercial because of the Shell gas station that was there when the specific plan was written over ten years ago. That was to retain that service station. That service station, of course, is no longer there, and the specific plan allows medium and high-density residential with a conditional use. The project that is before you will satisfy the maximum FAR of 3.0, and that FAR is pretty much maxed out here. The building itself is... I'm sorry. That's the vacant site, little closer look. I just want to go to that photo there. The building is maxed out along Eastmore and Sullivan Avenues. In order to satisfy that FAR, it's set back from the residential uses to the north and west. So the architect has sort of made sure that there was... that the bulk and the concentration of the architecture happened along Eastmore and Sullivan Avenue at the corner, which is, as you know, a very prominent corner. Let's go back to the floor plan. Vehicular access to the building occurs along Eastmore, here. And exit occurs over on Sullivan. Now, the original proposal was actually to have egress and ingress happen here, which is apparently where it was when the Shell gas station was there, but that was because of an easement that was granted to this property owner from this building owner. That easement is no longer available, so the project sponsor just needed to figure out how to get vehiculars in and out of the building without impeding a pretty quick flow of traffic that happens along this corner. So it's not ideal, but the traffic engineers made it work, and it seems to have a pretty good flow because, you know, the entry is here, there is a ground floor... I'm sorry, a basement level where the residential parking is. The retail parking is on the ground floor. The retail space is right at the corner. So the pedestrian access to the retail or commercial space is right here on the corner. The pedestrian access to the residential portion of the building is here along Sullivan. Here is... I'm sorry, let's go back one more. The design of the building, staff was reasonably pleased with. Their policy, planning policy is such that we encourage as much articulation as possible with a variety of building type and material. The building kind of reads as townhouses, which also give it a good sort of... a way for the eye to sort of move around the building and have it not seem so mon... large at that corner, especially this point here where it's at the top of the hill. So the project sponsors did provide a materials list that is very thought out and very detailed. This is a rendering, but based on the materials list, it seems pretty consistent with what they're going to build, so we're hopeful that the building resembles a lot of what this shows. This is the entry to the garage here. As you see, the platform here for the garage itself is above ground at this point. Of course, there's a basement level as well. This is the point at which the building steps back quite a bit. These homeowners who would be living in these units would be looking down on that roof. There seems to be, you know, some opportunity to do something here, but the, you know, they're limited by their floor area ratio. They can't use this as any more buildable space. Sorry. Okay. The parking basement. The system of parking here, in order to maximize the space, is a Klaas Trunvario parking system, which I would admit I don't understand fully, but it is a system that is stacked, two cars, and we require two parking spaces per unit. So most of these parking spaces are stacked, and there is a conveyor belt that runs horizontally. So there is typically, as I understand it, there's typically a space that's vacant or empty, and the conveyor belt sort of moves cars horizontally so that cars can come in and out. The queuing on this is something we're still working on to make sure that we don't have backups in the garage, but it seems there is enough space to work that out. And the applicant is here to describe that in detail if you prefer. As I mentioned, this is a condominium project, so they have submitted a tentative map. The project affordability to respond to the department's and the city's new inclusionary housing formula is such that the project planner will pay an in-loo fee, and that's what the in-loo fee would be, $602,096. Sorry. The environmental review on the site occurred, well, upon review during this project, we received information from the county, San Mateo County Office of... I think that's where they monitor the remediation of potentially hazardous sites. This site was fully mitigated back in 2004. There were four tanks in the ground, they were all removed. The residual chemicals in the ground were below, well below acceptable levels, or very acceptable levels. The San Mateo County... And I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the county that oversees this, but they do require that the building, at building permit stage, they be notified of what's going on there so that they can continue to monitor what the construction protocol is. So we have all that documented.
Corey, I interrupted you.
Sure.
Is there any retesting done at the time of permit issuance?
That's... They will decide that once we notify them...
Okay, thank you.
...of the application. The project is exempt from CEQA. It's considered infill development, and it meets the requirements of that section. And we find that the project is consistent with the general plan, and that substantial damage to fish and wildlife will not occur. Design of the subdivision will not cause serious public health problems. The subdivision will not conflict with existing easements, and it is exempt from, as I mentioned, CEQA 15332. And we recommend that the subdivision be... design review and use permit be forwarded to the City Council for approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvester, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have about eight of them.
Well, let's get to them then.
Okay. If you could kindly go to item number 60 under subsection C, and this pertains to the garbage pickup. It's indicated between, before 7:00 a.m., and then after, anytime after 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'm just wondering, is this because of potential for rush hour traffic, and we didn't want to interfere with traffic? And I was just wondering about those hours.
That's exactly what those hours are for. Those are recommended by the city engineer. You know, we were hoping that garbage pickup would happen inside the building. There are some constraints with that, and we... While the engineer chose to compromise on that, as long as they would keep that pickup during a certain time period.
All right, thank you. Pardon my manners, Mr. Alvin, I'd like to welcome you aboard, and thank you so much for your presentation. Now my questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any potential for BMRs below market rate because of the affordability that we're having in Daly City?
They submitted an affordable housing plan to the city manager, which was approved to pay an impact fee. So what happens is the impact fee goes to our housing trust fund, and when there's a collection of enough monies available, we would leverage those funds to fund an affordable housing project.
Outstanding, thank you.
That was the $600,000.
The $602,000? Okay. Number 62, item 62 enforced one-way exit and egress and degress. See, I'm familiar with Sullivan, folks traveling southbound on Sullivan, it really doesn't get too busy until the afternoon. Now, if someone is leaving the Sullivan side, and if they want to go north, they'd either have to go up to Eastmore, make a right turn, and go up the block, and find some way to make a U-turn. I'm just wondering about the EIR on the community with folks leaving the premises.
Well, Commissioner Sylvester, that's correct. The... Because there's a median inside Sullivan, it's not possible to make a left bound, or a left go northbound, so you're right. A motorist would need to travel either onto Eastmore itself, find a way to turn around...
Or go up Sullivan.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So it's not an ideal for situation, it's true, for northbound trips. None of those things do cause the requirement for this project to prepare an EIR. The project is exempt from CEQA, as Corey had indicated.
Great, thank you so much. Any idea on the environmental aspect, like the collection of gray water for the irrigation of plants that they may have there, or in the design?
There is no landscaping proposed here, except for the... Forgive me if I'm not answering your question.
Oh, no, no.
The project sponsors are required to plant street trees and have them irrigated. I think they're also proposing to do some potted plants around the building.
Okay.
So if... I don't know much about that, but perhaps there's some opportunity there to capture some waste water.
Great. I'm almost done, Mr. Chair. I'm concerned about open space. I didn't see any, anything in the plans for open space, maybe something in the middle. Where are dogs are going to go? What if some of these owners have dogs, and where would they go?
Up the street and the playground.
Up the street, where, the playground?
Yeah, to school.
Oh, well, no, we got a problem with the schools.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it was just a thought.
The project sponsor has not provided any outdoor open space. There is common open space in the building, and all of the units have balconies. Of course, that doesn't satisfy your concern with walking dogs or having some area outside to enjoy. That is one of the concerns here, except that, you know, we do encourage medium and high-density residential at that location, and it's got some challenges, as you know, with the hill and the location of it being, you know, so close near the freeway. But is there a park nearby that... I'm not so familiar.
No, there's not a park nearby. The city's zoning ordinance requires 150 square feet of open space per unit, and it's satisfied through the balconies. There's also some common rooms that are included within the... I believe it's the fourth floor of the building.
And the ground floor.
But no dog park.
No dog park, no. So it, yeah, but...
Two more, Mr. Chair. Parking, your Klaas system of parking and the movement of cars, I guess we're going to limit the size of vehicles. I mean, if somebody has a big boat, like a '69 Cadillac, they would not be able to... I mean, there'll be some conditions to make sure that cars will be limited to size, I guess through the CCNRs when the folks move in or purchase.
Something like this would need to be a disclosure to potential purchaser, that the system cannot accommodate vehicles larger than a certain dimension. We've actually run into this issue before, and so we're somewhat familiar with it. Yeah, that's right. Older cars, minivans, et cetera, sometimes have a, you know, problem with these systems, and condo purchasers would be, need to be made aware of that limitation.
Glenn, I think that's a condition that we add for these, just like we add the condition that the parking spaces must be used for parking. Yes.
Got you.
And we've added those.
Well, Mr. Chair, I have one more question, but that has already been answered. I thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Edelman?
Well, I also wanted to address the... I noticed the street tree cutouts in the sidewalk, but a very much a lack of any sort of landscaping plans, and I would like to see that actually added to somehow, not just potted, but more shrubbery or something towards the base of the building, if there was, if that was able to be accommodated. Because it's very bland.
So there are some... This project is required to comply with the city stormwater treatment measures, and there are some areas adjacent to the sidewalk where there would be some treatment measures. I believe those would receive some sort of minimal landscaping, and those are the areas here?
Those are small areas right outside the retail? So that would, that would be some sort of plants or shrubs or something?
It's their bioinfiltration system, basically, and they do typically receive small shrubs. The system hasn't been designed yet, and the city's third-party reviewer, you know, essentially approves what's going to go into those areas. But yeah, they could receive some...
Again, along with the design being very bland, at least above the first floor, the first floor, the retail floor, had some architectural interest to it. But if there was a possibility on some of those big blank walls, adding either some sort of a trellis or something with maybe a plant that could grow up and green it up and give it some interest, just a suggestion on the design side. Because, I mean, Daly City's known to be very concrete, and we don't want to continue to add to that. I think we're trying to green it up a little bit. So that was one of the concerns I had. Also, which Commissioner Sylvester addressed about the garbage, I just, I thought that was odd that before 7:00 or after 9:00 to 2:00 was an odd window, but I guess the engineers have already addressed that. And I didn't see anything in the report about any sort of an alarm for pedestrians on the vehicles exiting, which I think is pretty important. Because there hopefully will be people walking past that area. And then was there an opportunity also, Commissioner Sylvester asked about common area or dog-walking area, is there an opportunity to use the roof areas for social purposes or for recreational purposes? And so I'd like to see if there's a plan for that. Maybe when the applicant comes up, we can discuss that. And then, as far as the size of vehicles, I'm not quite familiar with how that works in terms of if this, does this developer, the owner of the property, when they're selling it, disclose that? But how is that enforced by the city? In terms of, somebody buys a unit there, and they've got two 1969 Cadillacs, obviously you can't take their cars away.
No, the city wouldn't control what vehicles they can own, but it's a disclosure that they wouldn't have access to vehicle parking at the address. So we can't limit what vehicles that person owns, but they can know what they can accommodate on site.
But by the same token, the homeowners' association can enforce that if it's in the CCNRs.
Yeah, through the commissioner, yeah, that is accurate. The city attorney's office does review the CCNRs, and we would ensure that that was in place.
So that would be a condition? Okay. That's all the questions I had.
Commissioner Satori?
Hi, good evening. Actually, I have seen a lot of projects like this, especially in San Francisco, and all of those trivial things like the parking, this can be settled by the traffic engineering. And I would like to say that the architectural and engineering design of this project is very elegant, and I would say it's modern, because considering the place, the place is a little bit, I would say, blighted. And every day as passed by there, this has to be developed, especially now that the city of Daly City is in the red as far as fine vegetative proposals concerned. So probably this can help also. This can tide up a little bit. And that's why, if we can have this, to me, I am personally inclined to have this approved, because we really need to really modernize our city. We cannot just be the so-called gateway to the peninsula, but we should be called the modern way of passage to the San Francisco and to the Bay Area, not just a gateway. Because the gateways, you can always be just pass by. But to us, we have to be more or less modernized, and this is one way of modernizing our place. Because this place passed by, it always passed by there for almost 10 years now, and it seems it's blighted. It has to be cleaned up. But as long as the technical aspect, the engineering, and the building and fire is well-settled, and I would say this will be a good place also. And the place is, I would say, top dollar. So that is only me I can say, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Talarico?
Ah, yes. The last shall be first.
We save the best for last, Charlie.
Well, Commissioner Sylvester went through quite a bit, so I really, a lot of them checked off, except I have a little bit of question about the Klaas system, the Klaas tracking system. Is it anyone, is anywhere?
I think we'll get the applicant up.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Well, other than that, all right, then, my, your staff, our staff. You have seven spaces for retail on the first floor in the garage area, correct? What type of retail stores are going to be there? Do you know, one, two, three? I mean, big, little, what, any idea?
Just in terms of... In terms of land use, the location of that commercial space, we sort of looked at it and thought that it probably wouldn't be appropriate for smaller-type businesses, like a restaurant or a cafe, but more likely a larger office, maybe an insurance office, or perhaps a, maybe a bigger service type use.
I saw that in the original document online.
It's probably going to be office.
Well, because I'm saying seven spaces, that's all you have.
Right.
Because there's no parking on that street, no parking Eastmore and all that. And I think the tenants have to know that, too. And again, of course, we say CCR and all this. Well, the tenant has three cars, or has two, one car too big, and on the street. See, I'm looking always the street, and that's one area you cannot park on the street.
That's right.
So that is, that is a tow zone.
It's a get hit by a car driving in the street zone.
Yeah, it's, pedestrians have a hard time. So that's my concern there. And then also, I have a concern of next door to the site, there is the old Seton Medical Center. Now, that is a bad thing. So, I mean, I'm just putting it out. It's ugly, and I'm going to put down a million dollars for a condo, and I open my window in the morning, and I see that. I really, I mean, I can't tell you what to do, but it's a bad sore sight. So then you're coming into the, you're coming into the peninsula, okay, you've got a big building. I'm not saying it's up to this developer's problem, but that it makes it a big problem.
Through the chair, that property is actually for sale. Seton has sort of released it to be sold.
Finally.
So we're all hoping, actually, that we'll see a proposal there for that site. We agree with you on that point.
Something long and narrow.
Now, there is, the school is up above from there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So with the egress in the morning and return at night, do the kids come down that way? Do they come down, or a school bus at all?
Not really. More there and over in the broad border. More there and over into Broadbauer.
Okay, so then we will have the alarms, like you say, for pedestrian going by. Okay, we'll save the Claus information for the architect. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'd all like the parking system explained. If the applicant would step up and enlighten us, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Anthony Ho from LPMT Architects, designer of the project. The owner actually have met the Claus parking sales rep, and they actually have toured the project in San Francisco on Mission Street. And also found a video on the internet, on YouTube, that is resembling very similar thing. So a picture is worth a thousand words. But which I forwarded the video to Corey late today, which hopefully he can forward to all of you to understand it more. But roughly just to talk about, in words, we all have played a puzzler game, you know, with squares and you move the things around. So the only way to move the pieces around is that you have to have one empty space. Same thing with the cars. So let's say you have 10 cars on the second deck, 10 cars on the first deck. Actually, you have to have one empty space, so one space is always protected, no car there. So let's say I want to get the car up there to come down to me. So what happened is that the system, you actually punch in a code, and the code is to protect, make sure that you are actually authorized person. And then after you punch in a code, within probably a minute or so, they will have ways to move it horizontally and vertically to get the car that you want into the open spot so that you go to get the car at that spot. But of course, sometimes it's easier, sometimes it's harder, depends on where it is. So that's the theory, you know. And I will let you read the video, it's pretty convenient, actually, it's not as hard as we thought it would be. And that system is getting more and more popular now. I've been doing Project One, and actually in Fremont right now, also high-density, is using the same system.
Actually, Your Honor, I have seen that in Hong Kong and also in Singapore.
Yes.
Especially if they're living in the twentieth floor, and their car is Porsche or the high-end car, it goes up. I wonder how they did, what they have done. So I have seen it. So probably we can accommodate to modernize also the city of this.
Yeah, exactly. Through the chair.
Please.
Sir, my thing is looking at the safety thing. You've got two levels, and you've got one empty space, of course, the cog wheel has to go. And you're gonna have security by a code number, okay, or a bar number, bar scanner. Let's say that this car up here catches on fire. I have a Tesla, the lithium battery catches on fire. What is the plan for fire department to come in to get that car that's over here, when you're on the ground level? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We have batteries going out all over the place. My concern is, you move a car up here, and it's over here in the middle of the night, that one starts to burn.
Sure.
Plans with a, does the city, of Daly City Fire Department, have they had input into this type of parking? Okay, okay, they're comfortable?
Yes, the fire department took a look at the parking proposal, and has regulations pertaining, conditions of approval pertaining to.
Next segue into that, we are a little bit in an earthquake zone, so to speak. If the power goes off, do you have auxiliary plan for natural gas generators to kick in to give the power so that these cars or the people can get their cars? Is there any emergency plan for that?
Yeah, so the city will require a backup generator of some sort to fire up when the electricity's down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And through the chair, to be clear, we've added a condition that the HOA also collect funds for the ongoing maintenance of this as well.
Yeah. Anything further for the applicant?
Just a comment. Sir, I.
Yes.
I want to mention, you know, we have a problem with parking in Daly City. And I've learned this does meet the requirement of two spots for every resident. In San Francisco, it's .25 for every resident. So subsequently, it would take four residents for one parking spot. I would have to say this plan of your Claus parking is very ingenuative. It is something that we need. I hope this development can show and set an example for others to come. And looking from the law enforcement side of it, I guess if a car is parked up on that second level, it'd be hard to break into.
No, no, I'm worried about breaking in, I'm worried about fire.
So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unless the burglar carries a ladder. Okay, thank you. At this time, I have no cards, so motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt the findings as outlined herein?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes no. Motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the major subdivision use permit and design review, subject to the conditions of approval outlined herein?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Up through the chair. Based upon the condition that Commissioner Edelman brought up about the alarm on the gate, that has been amended. As amended, thank you.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Edelman?
Yes.
Satori?
Yes.
Talarico?
No.
Crump?
No.
That's me, isn't it? Hello. Do we have any public, yeah, please, any public appearances? Staff communications?
Your Honor, I have here, in honor of the late Alice Peña Bulos, who died recently. And I would like to implore the commission to honor her for her community advocacy and leadership in the city by informing the family that we are recognizing her as such. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
If there is no objection from anyone, we will adjourn in her memory. And if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.